Adopted at the Virginia General Assembly 2020 reconvening veto session allowing all boards to meet virtually during emergency declarations, the amendment provides that a public body may meet by electronic communication without a quorum of a public body or any member of a government body physically assembled at one location when the government has declared a state of emergency and a declared emergency makes it impractical to un- or unsafe for the public body to assemble in a single location and the purpose of the meeting is to discuss or transact business statutorily required or necessarily to continue operations of the public body. An emergency declaration was issued on March 17th, 2020 under Governor Northam's Executive Order 53 due to the coronavirus COVID-19. As part of the order, temporary restrictions were placed on restaurants, nonessential businesses, and all public private in-person gatherings of 10 or more individuals were prohibited. The Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority Board Commission is August 20th. 2020 virtual special meeting will be using Microsoft Teams to facilitate the meeting. Alrighty. The Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority PRHA Board Commissioner meetings are held the third Thursday of each month, usually at 5:00 PM, but right now is at 1:00 PM. All meetings are conducted at PRHA's main office, 3116 South Street, Portsmouth, Virginia, 23707, unless otherwise noted. All members of the public are welcome to attend. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Okay. Commissioner Barham.
Here.
Commissioner Jigges. Commissioner Prince.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Wicks.
Here.
Vice Chair Lalonde.
Here.
And Chair Smith.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Awesome. Commissioner, before you, you have the meetings from July 16th, 2020, meeting minutes. If there is no, any unreadness, chairs in need of a vote?
A motion to accept the minutes is submitted.
Second.
It has been motioned properly, second. Thank you, Commissioners, Madam.
Commissioner Barham.
Yes.
Commissioner Jigges. I can see she's on, but I think she may be having technical difficulties. Alright, Commissioner Prince.
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Wicks.
Yes.
And Commissioner Jigges, yes. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Jigges. Commissioner Wicks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lalonde. Can you hear me, Vice Chair Lalonde?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and Chair Smith.
Alright, our next item we have is old business. What do we have, Mr. Bland?
Have nothing at this time. I will kind of mix that in with the sex director comments on number six.
Yes, sir. Alright, the next item we have on the agenda is disposition of Swanson Home and Zero F and M.
Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
And can you all see my screen?
Yes.
So, good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I'm here before you, good afternoon. I'm here before you today again to amend our 2019-2020 agency plan for two reasons this time. The first reason is to request a demolition and disposition application to submit to HUD for Swanson Homes. You know, we've talked about it on several occasions, the need to demolish Swanson Homes due to the age of the property and a portion of it being in the flood zone, which you all know called significant damage during Hurricane Matthew a few years ago. We also had a meeting with the residents early this year, and again, they expressed similar concerns. So we'll be looking to submit a Section 18 application to HUD sometime, you know, October, November timeframe. Now, as you know, with HUD, it's not an overnight process, so it could take several months for HUD to approve. Once approved, we will request tenant protection vouchers from HUD, and then once we receive, we will look to start relocating families. I don't anticipate this process starting until probably summer or fall of next year. The second reason we need to amend our agency plan is to request from HUD the disposition of the remaining portion of the Washington Park community. So on the screen, you'll see where it says zero. That used to be our Washington Park community, along with adjacent property where the fire department is. That remaining portion, which is about 3.5 acres, was not disposed of back in 2017 when HUD had approved the request. I'm not sure why this piece was left off, but it was left off. And so now we need to submit a disposition application to HUD to request the disposition of this property. And some of you all remember this property because several months ago, you all had approved this property to be sold to Safe Store for the purpose of a storage facility. So that's just a matter of formality. We have to submit it to HUD, and HUD has to approve it. So because these are considered substantial amendments, they do require a 45-day comment period as well as a public hearing. So we will hold a public hearing at our next Commissioners' meeting in September to see if we have any public comment on Swanson Homes or the Washington Park disposition. And I will bring a resolution before you to the next board meeting regarding Swanson Homes and Washington Park. Are there any questions for me?
Any questions, Commissioners?
I have a question.
You got the floor, Commissioner Jigges.
Yes. Will this at any point have to go before City Council?
No, this does not have to go before City Council. The city does have, as a part of the request for demolition and disposition, the city would have to submit a support letter along with their application for the demolition and disposition. And that's usually signed by the city manager. Now, the reuse of this property would have to go potentially to City Council for approval, or whatever that reuse may be.
Okay.
Fun again.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
How many units do we have? How many apartments do we have in this property in Swanson?
210.
Okay. So I guess we would have, have a plan at some point to replace those somehow?
Yeah. Well, we, we, we'll be looking at options to expand our portfolio. You know, we do have Lincoln Park coming on board, but every family will receive a tenant protection voucher, so they, which is basically a housing tours voucher, so they can use within the city or outside of the city or do what they choose with. So all families will be provided that relocation option of a Section 8 voucher.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lalonde?
Comment about Swanson Home. Now that it's out there, I want to, and I know Mr. Bland has talked about it, just want to make sure that the, the people that are at Swanson Homes right now, they don't feel like we're abandoning them, that we're still going to maintain the grass, we're still going to maintain the garbage pickup, we're still going to maintain the facilities, because I don't want them to think that because we're in a position, and we all know we need to get rid of it, I mean, I don't think there's any ands and buts about that, want to make sure that we keep the same qual-, we don't degrade the quality of life of those folks out there, because we just.
Agreed. And we won't.
Put too much money in there in the past with the flooding that we had with the, I guess it was Hurricane Floyd, and we're still fighting to get all the money back, but when we go out, I want to, you know, want us to go out with our heads high and we're just telling all those, hey, not only are we going to maintain your level, quality of, quality of life, we're going to make sure wherever we put you is going to have the same or better quality of life while we move you. So I just, just to say thank you very much, and I, you know, that's something I think our liaison makes sure she's close on it too, that she knows, hey, we're going to do everything we can to keep those people very happy while they're still there.
Absolutely.
We will.
If no one else has a question, I do have another question.
You got the floor, Commissioner Jigges.
We, as Commissioner, as Vice Chair Lalonde just alluded to, in the last, so we have purchased quite a bit of new appliances for Swanson Home. What is the protocol for disposition, all of that new appliances that we have purchased for Swanson Home, once demolition does begin?
Well.
Go ahead, go ahead, listen.
Well, normally, we would, the property would be demolished with all of the contents inside. Now, Dolores, Ms. Adams may want to speak on, you know, a public bidding process I'm not familiar with, but certainly, you know, I felt if we had anything that maybe was salvageable, that could be something we look, we could look at.
Oh, no.
But I don't suspect that being the case in, in, in most of the units.
Most of the, when we do a demolition contract, the contractor takes possession of the units and all of the contents of the units. So they can, they can remove them and dispose of them if they want to, you know, for the metal, but as part of their contract, they're responsible for getting rid of all of the contents in the units, including the appliances. What we have been done in the past, if it was something that we could use at another site, we would go in ahead of award of the contract and removes items that we could use for another site and keep it in our warehouse down Alpha, by Deal Home.
Well, Director Adams, I hope that would be the case, because as you know, we just did a full contract to, what was it? Was it the air conditioners or the?
We did some HVAC replacement, unit replacement, but they may not be compatible with other units.
But you don't have to include it in the contract, do you? Those, 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 the equipment that we recently purchased within the last two years to make those apartments livable, is it a requirement that that be included in a demolition contract? As well, you know me, with those wrought iron fences, does that have to be in that contract?
Generally, contracts do that.
Yeah, it is not a requirement, but it is what is generally done. And a lot of times, your demolition contract will include part of the bid amount that you receive, is because the contractor may anticipate having so, so much in salvage value from the items that he gets from the contract.
Well, personally, I think, I, I, I think that's a, a, a cost that is a wasteful cost, because this equipment is new, and we don't have to establish that contract in the venue that you're indicating. So I certainly hope we will give our full attention to that, because at the end of the day, it is still our fiduciary responsibility to practice cost-saving processes for our housing authority. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. What, what type of appliances were purchased for Swanson?
Recently, we just replaced some of the HVAC units, the air conditioning units and some other units. And as needed, and as needed, you know, we may request, replace a stove or refrigerator here and there if they can't be repaired.
But like, like you said, if it's not compatible with other units or properties, I don't know. I don't know what could be done.
But that's what they can.
Eventually, we might just have to eat that, but if you can't use them in other housing properties, then, I mean, what do you do? And, and Vice Chair Lalonde, I heard what you said about not neglecting the people or residents in Swanson, but I, I just think the sooner that this can happen, the better, because I don't know when the last time anybody has, any of you all have been passed there, but it's, it's really an eyesore. The upkeep, I don't know what the inside of the apartments look like, but the, the grounds and just the appearance of it, period, is just not pleasant.
I concur, but once again, Commissioner Wicks, there, there were quite a few AC units purchased under contract, and I want to say it was within the last year. And the wrought iron fence that is out there, it wasn't purchased within the last year, but it's good wrought iron fence, and we can certainly use that wrought iron fence in other places. So I would ask again that you all consider this carefully. If you have to pull the contract to specifically answer Commissioner Wicks' question on exactly what was in that contract, because I, I remember clearly that there were, I thought, I thought it was all of the apartments that were provided replacement AC units, you know. Thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioners. Do you have anything else, Ms. Winston?
No, I don't.
Alright, so the next item we have, we still a new business, right? This is in this one, so F and M, okay. Resolution 2020-24. That's the resolution authorizing execution of purchase agreement, one or more deeds or bargain sale with Corey Jackson, and it's assigned for development for a certain property at 283 Webster Avenue.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Resolution 2020-24, as noted, is requesting permission to sell property at 283 Webster Avenue to Mr. Corey Jackson. The purchase is intended to allow him to build a single-family home, a residential home, for sale. The, the offer.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Should this be enclosed?
I thought it was.
It's under new business.
That it should have been closed.
It's under new business, but it should, should it be enclosed?
Yeah, we have to vote open, so, but we do need to discuss it in clothes.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we can wait on that, discuss that in clothes, Mr. Page.
Okay.
The next item we have is a six-month financials, new business.
How are you?
Hey, how are you, Shannon? You got the floor?
Um, before you, I, I prepared a six-month, because the last one that was prepared was for end of December, because we are having such time constraints with the new auditors and trying to get these partnership audits in for our deadline with the IRS and HUD by 9:15. We have to have all the tax submitted, and then, of course, the 6:30-19 agency audits have to be finished and submitted by the end of September. So instead of doing two separate quarters, I just combined them all into a six-month, and they're definitely unaudited, because most of the numbers are going to be changing on the balance sheet side anyway. As I met with Bruce, and from what you can see, I mean, we're in, we're in good hands. We're doing very well. There's a few of the public housing properties that are, are currently showing a loss, but as I explained, as the CARES and COVID money has come in, right away, there were not any detailed of what you had to do to submit it, reporting-wise. So I wanted to make sure that I had the HUD guidance, and that when I save, I pulled down for Swanson, that I had backup for those particular property, you know, for those particular transactions and expenses. Most of the money will then be coming in through, I pulled down a bunch in July, so that will wipe off those losses for those particular. Plus, I had to do a submittal to HUD for a revised subsidy, and that was submitted July 15th, and although I haven't got formal notification, they have uploaded it to our React system with HUD, and it does look like we are going to get a little bit of an increase for like Pine Holly and the two Seabords, and that will then be into the next quarter as well. So those will take care, eliminate those losses. But overall, we are, because of this additional funding, we are operating pretty well.
You got it.
Bruce, wasn't sure if you had any questions or?
I wanted to, I wanted to jump in here, and I personally, as a Commissioner, want to apologize that these, these financials are not, were, came out so late. I want to take personal responsibility on that. I know Rita and I, over the months, have been working closely with Shannon, but I, I guess I, I did not realize, or didn't, didn't really take into account all the pressure that the financial folks are having during this COVID-19 period. And on one hand, I appreciate Shannon getting a snapshot out, just so that we're aware that we are, and make sure, as highlight what she said, we are in very good financial shape. But the details, I know there's questions, if people are going to have more details, I ask that you give us just a little bit more time for Rita and I to look at it, challenge Shannon on some questions, and then we open up for more discussion at the next board meeting. So I appreciate that. But kind of, kind of as an oversight, we're, we're getting near the end of a two-year journey that Shannon has been trying to make to get our financials where they're absolutely pristine. As you know, we changed CFOs, we changed auditors, and Shannon and her staff, and she's had a, kind of a revolving door of a few people. It is, it has taken her and consultants that Mr. Bland has brought aboard to get the financials to where they're looking at now. We are in very, very good financial shape. That's good. What we're finding out now, that some of these documents that we need to support things in the past, they're just not in existence. We talked about last meeting, last time, about this, this Holiday Inn property and where all those documents are at. So I, I'm asking for just another month, month's patience for us to go through this. But I want to again applaud Mr. Bland, Shannon, for where they've gotten us and where the financials are looking right now. Also, just to make you all aware, and she didn't bring it up, the agency has received a, a good bit of CARES money, good bit of CARES money, and if you've seen other agencies get CARES money, I can't believe how much is flowing and how much, how aggressive, I appreciate how aggressive PRHA has been in getting CARES money. They've been able to do absolute sanitation, they've been add, be able to add extra security at our buildings, and we'll talk about that in a few seconds. They've been able to buy vehicles, they've been able to provide some, some monies for things that we've been holding at the side for the CARES money. So that's helping us prop up the financials. But again, I want to go back to where I started. I want you to take a look at the financials. Please challenge myself and Shannon and Rita with any questions that you have, but let's do a deeper dive if we can the next, next period. But I just, bottom line, the financials, we're in the best shape we are financially, our reserves are looking as strong as we've ever had, and we're in a good position here at PRHA.
Wonderful.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Lalonde, any other Commissioners? Okay. Our next item is, thank you, Shannon. Next item is reports, not July significant reports, Mr. Bland.
Commissioners, before you, you have the July Significant Activity Report. I don't know if you had an opportunity to read it thoroughly, but if you have any questions beyond today, please reach out to me. A couple of things I want to do is have Dolores to talk a little bit about the feeding program, because you know, we, we've been feeding the kids during the summer, and Dolores, you want to talk for that, please?
Sure. The, our Family Self-Sufficiency Department has been doing a feeding program for the kids and our kids and seniors in our complexes since March, when the shutdown happened due to COVID-19. So we do about 1,500 meals a week, and have been doing that since March. We are about to end that program the end of this month. The staff has been working consistently since March on the program, so it's time to get back to work on our regular duties and the school system will take over at the beginning of the school year after Labor Day. They're putting in plans so that they can feed the youth that are normally fed through the school system, such as part of it is, they may have buses that come into the communities as well as having food sites at schools. I wanted to talk a little bit about our jobs plus grant, as Mr. Bland let you all know previously, we received a 2.3 million jobs plus grant from HUD. It is a four-year grant to provide training, employment, and supportive services to residents of Swanson Home and Seaboard Square. We're actually in the planning stages of the grant at this moment. We're working with our, our grant manager, the HUD, has assigned to us, because we're looking at an implementation, implementation date of January of 2021. But with the pandemic going, we don't know if that's going to be moved, but right now, we're proceeding as if January 2021 will be our implementation date for us to start providing these services to residents of Swanson and Seaboard. And the third item I like to talk about, and it's a different animal for us, we received a 21st Century Community Learning Center grant. We partner with the Portsmouth Public School System. This will be an afternoon, an after-school program, a summer program, based out of Parkview Elementary School. Parkview was selected because many of our students go there, students in Swanson, as well as those in the Westbury communities, they attend Parkview Elementary School, and the program is to, is used to assist schools that have populations that are struggling academically. So although the grant was received by the Housing Authority, the school system will be instrumental in staffing, we're going to have, the plan was an after-school program. Yesterday, we had a virtual conference call with the 21st Century Community Learning Center, people from the State Department of Education, and they were providing us information on how to turn what was initially started as an after-school program on-site into a virtual program. So the state is working with grantees on how to make, how to still meet the needs of the kids in school while doing a virtual program. The idea was, it was, it was going to be three hours, four days a week. We were going to do academic remediation, tutoring in English and math. We were going to add music and arts as an enrichment, you know, that's the carrot, to try to make sure the kids participate. We also were going to work on, they call it social and emotional learning, SELs. It's like I'm learning new lingo. But we had a mental health agency that was going to work with the kids with that, and then the final leg was try to get the parents and family engaged in the activity. So like I said, our role for the most part would be the financial oversight, the reporting and documentation. We're going to sub, we were going to subcontract with the school system as well as some partners that applied with us, that the school system is currently using, so that they can provide those services. And we're going to help with the outreach with the families, so we can encourage the kids not only to enroll, but also to attend. The school has this program in other schools. However, they've been challenged with having the participation that they would like, so that's why they thought it was a great partnership opportunity with Portsmouth Housing Authority and the school system, because we have access to the parents and families, and they have access to the kids, and together, hopefully, we can make sure that the program is successful and kids get the, the help that they need. Are there any questions?
I got a comment for you, real quick. You, you all are doing phenomenal work, that Family Self-Sufficiency, that program you oversee, that, that is epic, and especially in these trying times with COVID, you know, and us being blessed and fortunate as an agency to get these grants and, you know, and having the right people to apply and go after these grants. And that's a blessing that we can do that partnership as well, not just with the community, with the, with the public school system. And I just want to say that, kudos to you and your team.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to tag on to that, Dolores, and the new Commissioners, Commissioner Wicks, Commissioner Barnum, and Commissioner Prince, if you get a chance to go out to Hope Village where they, where they kind of hang their hat, they, they are just fantastic in what they do. And I know Dolores, hopefully, you're getting ready to tie the knot. And I know, Delores, hopefully, you're getting ready to tie the knot on the scholarships that you're getting ready to give, I hope.
Oh, we've, we've already awarded scholarships.
Yeah.
We've awarded this college, we didn't have a big celebration this year, unfortunately, due to COVID. However, we awarded, I think it was six scholarships this year, the kids and adults, because we award scholarships to graduating seniors as well as adults. They've received their checks. And so anticipation of them going back to school or starting school. So we wanted to ensure that we did not, our residents did not miss out on receiving that assistance this year due to COVID-19. And we hope this, starting this fall, we're going to implement a nice little campaign to raise additional funds for our scholarship fund because it is definitely needed.
It's definitely a great program, no doubt. Would love it universally advertised, but just wanted at least the new commissioners to know that is just a fantastic thing that, that family sufficiencies does. And also is a direct benefit to our residents in, in housing. So thank you very much, and Delores, thank you very much, not only for the programs that you've just won, but for that continuing program. That's, that's a good thing that we can help our own.
Delores, I do have, I do want to weigh in also. You know, I'm a proponent for making sure whenever there is opportunity to use Portsmouth-based, then the contractors redo that. Now, I know you say that the contract is going to go, is this the contract that's going to go over to the Portsmouth School Board? Or is this the one that's going to be, or is this the one that's going to stay in-house and the Housing Authority will be responsible for awarding the contract? Because you mentioned about the music activity and some other activities. And you mentioned that.
Learning, that's the one that, yeah. For is our subcontractor on, 21st Century Community Learning Grant.
Okay, will there be stipulation that says to try as much as possible for them to award the subcontract Portsmouth-based providers? For example, with the music contract?
This is a, this grant is also a federal grant. Federal grants do not allow you to do a, a local preference because they, they feel, the feds feel that that diminishes competition. However, the school system has individuals that they worked with previously on their other 21st Century grants, and those will be the same people that we're using with this grant because they already have an existing program and curriculum in place.
Do you know if through that contract, they are Portsmouth-based 1099 subcontractors? Do you know?
I'm not sure. I can look and see who was, who they listed in the grant application because I don't know who they are right off.
And you said the name of the grant is the 21st Century?
21st Century Community Learning Center Grant.
Okay, thank you. I would appreciate that follow-up on that. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. The, the after-school program that you said is for Parkview and Seaboard, is, is that like a tutoring program?
That's the 21st Century Community Learning Grant. That isn't, it is, they provide tutoring, they provide enrichment activities. So they're working with English, math, music, arts. They got some, some social and emotional learning activities and family engagement. So those are all components of that one grant system. And it's, and because it's Parkview, our developments that are zoned for Parkview.
Hold on one second. You said Swanson and Seaboard, right, Commissioner Wicks?
Yes. Is that what, is that correct?
No, Swanson and Seaboard is the JOBS plus grant. That's totally different.
Is, is the what grant?
JOBS plus. That's what they're called. JOBS plus.
Okay.
Okay, I have another question.
So how do these residents? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wicks.
No, go ahead, Commissioner Wicks. I can wait to ask my question.
How do these, is, are these students or parents notified through the school? Or how, how do they apply for these programs?
Are you talking about the 21st Century?
Yes.
Okay, with the 21st Century grants, the students are, the families are notified through the school system. The reason, one of the reasons we partner with the school system is we're going to, we're going to assist in the outreach activities for this grant program. So we're going to, on our end, we're, our staff is going to also do marketing and outreach and recruitment to the parents directly. And we're going to have sign-ups right in our communities as opposed to, well, the school system don't have that type of access to the parents that we have. That's why we think this will make a really good partnership.
Okay, understood. Okay.
Commissioner Jakes.
Thank you. Director Adams, what is the dollar value of the, of the grant contract for the 21st Century?
$195,000 a year, and it's for three years.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Comments? Thank you again for what you do, Ms. Adams.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Commissioner, what would happen in, probably in February, once we kick it off, we'll give you update when we, when the program is kicked off. Both the JOBS plus and the 21st Century will give you update once the programs are initiated.
Okay. Now we are at item number six, executive director comments, department updates, Mr. Bland.
Commissioners, I know I've been sending you stuff from time to time. The latest thing I sent you was the PHA Guide to Prevent Homelessness After the Eviction Moratorium Inspired. And I sent that out to you, and what we are doing, we're sending all of our residents who have outstanding balances, a, a letter, and that was attached, that will give them the opportunity to come in between now, between now and September 30th, to, they can sign what you call a repayment agreement, and we can extend that out over a period of time if any of them are behind. So we're reaching out to all the families who have outstanding balances to give them that opportunity because the last thing the Housing Authority want to do is evict anybody. That's not what we really want to do, so we're going to be working with our family. And if you notice in the PHA Guide that HUD sent out, they strongly encourage Housing Authorities to do repayment agreements, to work with the families. Along with that too, I think the governor, the governor's looking at maybe trying to extend eviction, no eviction until April of next year. So we don't know how that's going to work out. And along with the governor also, there's a moratorium on utility company can't do any shut-offs until January of next year. So I think between the federal government, the local, the state government, they're putting in place a lot of tools to prevent families from being homeless or loss of utilities. Any questions in reference to the PHA Guide to Prevent Homelessness After the Eviction Moratorium that you received in the mail?
Executive Director Bland, thank you for sending that information out. I particularly focused on the best practices with the other housing authorities. So certainly, if there are some best practices that our Housing Authority will be utilizing that are not yet being utilized with other housing authorities, I will certainly encourage you to proactively share your best practices for our Housing Authority with the other agencies. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments, Commissioner? Well, you still got some.
The other piece, we're working on a homeownership program. And we hoped, we was hoping to kick that off this fall, but once because of the pandemic, we probably will be kicking off homeownership program the first part of 2021. I don't know if Delores or Carol want to talk in reference to what we had did so far in reference to the homeownership program?
Well, we're, we're very excited about having a homeownership program again, something we previously had. We have, we're looking at it to be two-pronged. One, we're looking at implementing the Housing Choice Voucher for homeownership program so that individuals that qualify could use their, use a Housing Choice Voucher to go towards the mortgage, purchasing of a home. We're also looking at a homeownership program so that our residents across the board that's interested in moving to homeownership will get to participate in the financial counseling, financial education, homebuyer education, home, homebuyer counseling, as well as other supportive services that put them in a position so that they can move towards homeownership. There are programs out there that will assist them. We have partners that are willing and able to help them with down payment and close house assistance that will help hold their hands while they're going through the program. We're hoping, we're looking to partner with agencies such as the Urban League, the UP Center, Dollar Bank, and some other financial institutions, as well as DHDA. So this is, we're really excited about starting this program because we have residents, we have residents all the time that have gone through the FSS program and moved towards homeownership. And, and that's, that's with us using purely outside resources and not having a formal program in place. So we expect to see a lot of success coming from our residents once we implement a formal program.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Jakes.
Yes, sure. Obviously, I have mentioned it a number of times before. I would like to see a rehab, homeownership rehab component to this program. Are we able to pursue that at this time along with the homeownership program, the rehab component that we also had before years ago?
Alyssa?
I will be looking to apply for the funds from the city to establish the rehab program again when they open up the application process. They usually, it's usually sometime in November, December timeframe. So I do plan on applying for those funds for a rehab program.
Okay then, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, if you remember, that's what, one of the programs that Mr. Krimer briefed us on last month. And we, we told him that we were coming forward with it. It's just, you know, hoping that the city gets the money and the city allows us to do that for us, for them.
Yes.
Okay, the last item I had, back in June of 2019, the Housing Authority submitted a letter of interest to become a moving to work agency. And because of the pandemic, HUD kind of got behind on that. So hopefully, before the end of this year, we hope to hear something in reference to that. I feel, I feel very good that, I strongly feel that the Housing Authority will be one of the agencies selected to become a moving to work agency. So, and we, I'm hoping we should know before the end of 2020.
That's wonderful. Wonderful.
That's all I have. Okay. Commissioners, commissioners comments? You want to go first, Bruce?
Yes, if you don't mind, I have just, I have just a couple here. Lexington Place, I know we had the waitlist, the housing list go out. There's a closed, how many, how many did we get? When are we going to do the lottery for the residents, the residents for Lexington Place?
Okay, so we did the drawing of the lottery last Friday. We took about 1,700 applications. We did 150 applicants per bedroom size, the one-twos and threes. And it is posted on the website by confirmation number.
Okay.
Any idea if any, how many of the Lincoln Park residents, how many of them said, hey, I want to go into Lexington? Did they, first of all, did they have the first, did they have the first priority? And was there a number of that said, I want to live in Lexington?
Yes, actually, we sent out a survey prior to us opening up the waitlist to see how many applicants, well, previous residents wanted to come back. So they go to the top of our list naturally.
It was, it was only a handful who wanted to come back.
It wasn't too many.
I have a question.
Can, can you, can you kind of talk about the reason why they didn't want to come back?
Well, in the survey we did ask, you know, if you did not want to come back to Lexington Place, what were some of the reasons? And some of the reasons listed were the crime in the area. You know, they did not want to give up their voucher and that flexibility to go anywhere. So they were comfortable with the kids in the school system that they were currently in. So the majority of them chose to stay and keep their voucher. And, you know, if they came back to make a part, they would have to, you know, relinquish that voucher. So most of them wanted to keep the voucher. It was maybe five or six, if I remember correctly, that wanted to come back. And so they would get first priority, and they will, before anyone else.
Thank you. Commissioner Lalande?
Yeah, I just had one more comment before I pass Baton on. We've had, of course, a change in commissioners. And just, just want to encourage all of us to get involved in a committee. I know myself, Rita and I are on the, on the financial committee. There is a housing committee, I've lost the other commissioner that I was on. And we have a lot of good dialogue with the public housing and the Housing Choice Voucher side. But it's, it's a good way for, it's a good way for, for us, and it is, I know for me personally, to do a deeper dive and ask more questions, more detailed questions that we normally wouldn't ask or even know to ask during any of these meetings. But I would encourage you to contact Mr. Bland and the, and the chair. I know we've got a personnel committee, we have a finance committee, we got a housing committee, we got a development committee. And if you're not part of a committee, I would encourage you to be part of one because we've got some great staff here at PRHA. And a lot of them are excited to tell their story, a lot of them excited to ask for some support. So I would ask that you join a committee and meet with those before we have these meetings so we can do a deeper dive if we need to do a deeper dive.
Just a second, you know, and I think we, we did that before we were signed. And we could just re-pull the list and see who's assigned to what. I know we haven't met in forever due to COVID and everything else, but you're spot on with that, Bruce. So I'll make sure we'll pull that list again, Mr. Bland.
You sent out a list on it as needed.
Yes, sir.
I think it was human.
Got you.
But I, I do have a quick question, if possible.
What, what question, Frank?
After all the construction is done on the new, the new houses, is there any grants, any partnership with the city to do something with the surrounding area specifically off of, I think Frederick by the train tracks and then the street? Just, you know, we're going to put, you know, million-dollar replacements up there and the area is still going to look like, you know, third world country around it. And if not, how can we spearhead, excuse me, something, to do some sort of landscaping, some sort of street pavement and the surrounding area to just uplift that so it looks like you're actually moving into or back into something that's decent?
Okay, what I did was I sent the letter to the city manager with photos of the Housing Authority concerned, took pictures on the corner of Deep Creek and Frederick, where that junkyard is. We took photos near the corner of Deep Creek and Columbus because we are concerned as an agency that we are spending millions of dollars for a new community over there and the adjacent neighborhood is just implorable. And I did send, I did send photos to the city manager. And I will reach back out because we are, we have encouraged the city to be proactive in cleaning that area up. Because as Alyssa just mentioned, one of the reasons why some of the families may have decided not to come back is because of that neighborhood. So we realized that the city is going to have to help us to really clean that area up. And we will continue to be proactive in encouraging them to go ahead and do that.
Sean, I think that's, that's an excellent comment you made, Sean. I mean, that's an excellent, excellent comment. I, I, I just, my dialogue with folks with the city, I'm just not hearing a will for them to do. I, I, I just, my dialogue with folks with the city, I'm just not hearing a will for them to do anything. I'm just not hearing the will. And uh, I'm just gonna throw it out there. I, I don't know what the rules are. I mean, there's people here on the staff who can tell us what the rules are. But we know we've engaged in dialogue with Jeff Krimer, and through him, the city gets CDBG money, which is meant to do to improve communities. So, one, we need to go with him to see if he could push it up. But I, I, I know this is gonna sound, sound crazy, but I think we ought to think about buying all that property. PRHA does. And we figure out, okay, from that point, what can we do to develop it? Because it's gonna be a shame that we put fantastic housing, and we will invest millions of dollars in Lexington Place. We're now gonna look for money to demolish the rest of the apartments and put more stuff in Lexington Place. And we're, we're gonna be dependent on a city that just doesn't have a vision right now to do anything with it. So I just, I just think maybe we ought to have some sidebar discussion. If we don't get the support from the city, what can we do? Because shame on us if we don't try and do everything that we can.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm still trying to ask my question. Is it okay now, Chairman Smith?
Commissioner Jacobs.
Yes, and this goes back to um our Assistant Executive Director, um, Ms. Winston. When you sent out the, uh, when you all sent out the communication to the former Lincoln Park residents to see who wanted to return. Were there any return to sender uh communication from that effort?
So there, there was, there was a few that returned, and so we resent the surveys back out to them. So if we got a return address, then we would have forwarded that to the return um address listed on the envelope.
So you're saying you had a one hundred percent response, is that correct?
No, I'm not saying we had one hundred percent response. You know, those that, you know, we sent them to everyone to complete. And if we had some that was returned to the sender, you know, back to us, and we had afforded address, then we would afford that information. So we did not get a hundred percent participation, but we did send it out to everyone um that was in the communities and asked them, we gave them maybe two weeks to respond to our request.
Okay, and then uh as um a follow-up to what Vice Chair Lalonde uh made mention of. If I, if I'm not mistaken, the Housing Authority still, if they so choose, can make an application to establish. The adjacent peripheral areas around Lexington as a conservation district. Is that not correct?
I'm not sure, you know, what the parameters are for the city to designate that as a, that particular conservation area. Um, I do know that um CDBG funds could be used to address blighted communities. And if so, I mean, those, that's eligible use. And so I would love the city to use some of their CDBG funds to demolish or, you know, and purchase those properties. And have us demolish and build new properties in those same locations. So that's eligible, eligible use, eligible use, I'm sorry. But I'm not sure of the designation of the conservation area. I would have to do a little bit of research on that.
If you would, because I know in the past that allowed housing authorities to aggressively redevelop areas. By establishing it as, as a conservation district. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. Uh, any other comments from our Commissioners? Okay, there being none. All right, well, Chair comments?
I wanna explain my T-shirt today. Um, we asked Mr. Bland a long time ago, we were talking about rebranding, so we got a new logo, right? About, so when I think about the saying, we always say we're more inviting than ever, so I thought about the power of colors. So when you see the blue on my shirt, we're, we're friendly, we're inviting. And when you deal with public housing, as we are, we're still dealing with a whole component of a person and a family. And we show ourselves friendly by being inviting in. That's what we do. We still deal with the whole family and the whole person, not just public housing per se. So when I think of the color green, most of us think money, but also I think of equity. We wanna give the folks equity. We just had this conversation in our meeting, we're talking about it, Move to Work. One of the big reasons Mr. Bland came here, Move to Work, was we're intrigued by that Move to Work program. Now we're on the cusp of getting that done. And then, you know, Dolores, how we mentioned the, the House Choice Voucher for folks to use the vouchers to do homeownership. That's a beautiful thing. So with the play on these colors, it just makes sense. I know we used to have the brick and mortar, the maroon and the gray we had for forty-seven years, however long we had it. We changed the design. So me and Mr. Bland was talking, I said, we need to change the colors. And it just makes sense. It's bright, it's inviting. It pulls you right on in, just like the Geico commercial. When you see that blue, it pull you in. Sad but true, progressive lady get you every time with that blue. You know, you think about the city color of the flag, the blue, that blue pulls you in, you know, so. And all of us like green, all of us like money, who don't in this group like equity? Everybody like equity, that's a powerful thing. So to give the power back to the folks, you know, and show them they have a part in this, you know, they're important too. So that's my play on that with this T-shirt. I made it myself, so, and he didn't pay me to do it, no, he didn't, no, I did it myself, so. And if we do go this route, and you know, he planned to go this route with this color, this new color, of course, we'll use the outside vendor. But uh, that's what I got to say to that. And I just wanna say to you all, I, I appreciate what you all do. From staff to board member and so on and so on. It takes a lot of fortitude, it takes a lot of stick-to-itiveness to do what we do. Point blank, period. I don't care what nobody say. So much is given, much is required. So we got a lot of work to do, y'all, and continue up the great work, and continue the great work, and that's what I gotta say my two cents on that.
Can you stand up so that we can actually see the T-shirt?
Is the camera following me? Can y'all see it now?
A little better.
I can.
A little bit.
On the back of the shirt, what I was thinking to put, I, I love, I love, I love slogan, we're more invited than ever, on the back of the T-shirt.
That sounds great.
Yeah. Yes, sir, go ahead, Miss Bland. Oh, oh, also Commissioners, uh, between now and Saturday, you will get a list of conferences for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three. So that you can kinda look at what's uh, what's, what national conference will be available uh during that particular time, so you can kinda plan your schedule accordingly. I know Commissioner Prince were hoping to go to Denver, uh, but because of the pandemic, that didn't happen. Uh, I don't see anything happening this year unless it's virtual. But uh you should have a list of conferences for twenty twenty-one by Saturday, and you can look that over and let us know uh if you plan, want to attend any of them for twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. Also Commissioners, uh, and uh, uh, Alyssa, you can send this out, the uh, the, the, uh, the NARO, the certifications. They're doing it online this year, NARO, for the Commissioners.
Okay.
So that's just FYI as well, Commissioners.
Uh, Chair Smith, uh, may I make a quick announcement? Um, I was asked to um just send out a friendly reminder to all the Commissioners that um, per what was discussed um by the Executive Director of the FOIA Council. Um, let's be cautious about sending out emails that may include more than two Commissioners, because this may be seen as a meeting. So I know my best practice, and I was informed by the Executive Director to do, I always send it out blind copy. Um, so that it does not seem, make the appearance that it's a meeting. So if we can just be mindful of that, um, to keep it either one-on-one. Or um try to, yeah, well, it can't be more than three, um, three or more. So, so let's just be mindful of that. But um, and if anybody has any questions, you can definitely, I'm here, and also Attorney James as well, we can uh assist you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And a great FOIA officer, and a secretary.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, Ms. Wicks, Commissioner Wicks.
To, um, Mr. Bland, um, the virtual meetings, um, the ones that we weren't able to attend. I really um got an interest in it after going to Phoenix in January, but when I logged on. That, you know, they still went forward with the meetings, but you have to pay for them even though they were virtual. Is there any way that the Housing Authority can pay if I would like to attend any of the virtual meetings?
Um, yeah, we can, we can, we can make that possible.
Okay.
Yeah. If you just reach, let me know which one you're interested in, uh, we can make that possible.
Okay.
Awesome, okay. Now, do we have any public speakers? PRHA allows it to five minutes to speak. Do we have any, do we have any on, on the line? Do you have any speakers on the line? On once, on twice, it's gone. All right. Resolution twenty, twenty twenty-five, resolution of intent to meet in closed meeting. Whereas the Virginia Freedom Nation Act provides the Board of Commissioners can meet in a closed meeting for. The discussion and consideration of disposition of public, publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect. The bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body set, as set forth in Section two point two dash three seven one one A three of the Code of Virginia as amended. The matters for discussion is the disposition of real property located at the Shea Terrace and Victory Boulevard. Whereas the Virginia Freedom Nation Act provides that the Board of Commissioners can meet in a closed meeting for personnel matters. As set forth in Section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia as amended. The personnel matter is a discussion of Executive Directors' annual performance and evaluation. And whereas the Virginia Freedom Nation Act provides that the Board of Commissioners can meet in a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel. And briefings by staff pertaining to an actual or probable litigation. Where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body as set forth in Section two point two dash three one one. A seven of the Code of Virginia as amended. The legal consultation pertains to probable litigation involving a harassment claim. Now therefore be resolved that it complies with Virginia Freedom Nation Act and the above referenced sections of the Virginia Code. The Board of Commissioners shall reconvene in a closed meeting on August twentieth, twenty twenty, for the discussion of disposition of publicly held real property pursuant. Virginia Code, Section two point two dash three seven one one A three, personal matter pursuant to Section two point two dash three seven A one. And for a discussion of a legal matter pursuant to Section two point two dash three seven A seven. Chairs need a motion to go in closed session.
Chair, uh, Mr. Chair?
Sir.
Uh, before we continue, are we combining um twenty twenty dash twenty-four and twenty-five?
Yes, that's the item we're speaking on.
We're talking about twenty-five now, but aren't we gonna do twenty-four as well?
Twenty-four goes in, yes, sir.
Okay.
We need a motion.
I make a motion to go in a closed meeting.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Okay, Commissioner Barron?
Yes.
Commissioner Jiggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Prince?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts? Commissioner Wicks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lalonde? And Chair Smith?
Yes.
Uh, just as a reminder, um, for the closed session, there's a separate link that was sent to you. Um, so you'll need to exit this one um and enter the new one. But upon conclusion of the closed session, please re-enter this um session here. I- is there anyone that did not receive the link? I can resend it to you fairly quickly. Okay.